Hello everyone, I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television and I will be your moderator today. We're coming to you from the High Technology Building on the Germantown campus and Dr. Pollard is very excited to be hosting her first Town Hall of the academic year. Now as always, if you're close by and you're watching online, why don't you come on over and join us? We're on the second floor of the High Technology Building, right outside the entrance to Globe Hall, so we'd love to have you here with us today. Now my job, as always, is to make sure that Dr. Pollard stays focused on all of your questions and I do encourage you to ask questions, to bring up new points, to bring up new subjects. Now, if you're watching online, you can email your questions to TownHall@MontgomeryCollege.edu or you can tweet your question with the hashtag #AskDrPollard. And we're going to try to get to as many of your questions as we can during the time that we have today. You can help me out by keeping your questions brief and please make sure that whether you're here in the room or you're watching online, that you identify yourself before you ask your question. So, without further ado, here's Dr. Pollard.
Well hello everybody, good afternoon.[103.04][103.04](APPLAUSE). Wow. So, we have a full house. My assumption is that there's some good topics that are out there for discussion and I'm going to try and be as brief as I can in my introductory comments with the exception of one area that I'm going to talk quite at length a bit, if you don't mind. The other thing I'm going to ask you all to do is you always just continue to give me a good energy as we go through this and I'm going to try and stay on point and I'm going to start off by saying, "Welcome back to the semester." I know that we're several weeks into it already. It's wonderful to see so many students in the audience today, some of my own students who I'm seeing as well and one of my favorite student mentees who's here as well. What I think is very exciting about this is that if you have not been talking to students around the campus, it's amazing to me how many new students who are here this year. Almost every student that I've talked to when I walked the campuses the first couple weeks of school were almost, I'd say 75% new. So I think that's a very interesting, and that's not just strict research methodology, but it is something to talk about the fact we're seeing more students arrive here. We also have had, in spite of some significant challenges that may have been upon us, we have had a great opening to this academic year. Number one with that is enrollment. I don't know about you, but there were a lot of factors that could have contributed to a very different enrollment perspective that we've had this year than what we've had. One is that enrollment in higher education, both community college and four-year institutions have been declining across the nation. If you're watching this, you'll probably have seen some of the newspaper articles, some of the news articles on TV and so forth. Very interesting. In Maryland, which I think is even more important, community colleges have been down about 4% on average, ranging from 2% to 8% that they've seen enrollment decrease. What I'm very interested about this though is that when you combine this national trend with the trend that MCPs is having fewer students who have been graduating from high school, it was almost a perfect storm. You also add the fact that we did the on-time registration, 11:59, right? Onto our enrollment processes. It was almost a perfect storm for some very different things to happen, but I'm very happy to tell you due to a lot of hard work by our folks in our admissions and registration area, financial delay, and our departments and divisions in terms of schedule, we actually had this semester almost the same enrollment. We're ahead of what we projected, think we're down maybe less than 1% compared to what we would have been in previous years. So that is a congratulations to each and every one of you who've been an active part of this and to our students who enrolled. We had more students enroll and more taking larger loads, which I think is a very important point to keep in mind. The other thing I would tell you is that it took a lot of hard work, so I want to say thank you to everyone who was out on the front line, all the projects and the teams who actually went out to assemble this work and to meet with folks. Thank you for everything you did to make sure. And the new scheduling, I know that that was a challenge. I heard a lot of the deans talking about, "How do I put this here? How do we spend time thinking about this?" And that was, I think, the important part of this exercise. I had no idea, no doubt that we're going to go further than what we've done in this past year. And thank you to all of our access people who've been actively engaged in this work as well. Let me talk about one business thing I think is important. You probably received a little postcard at home if you're an employee of the institution regarding our online platform for online for our open enrollment period. Our open enrollment period is going to start October 26th through November 20th. This year, all employees, all employees, all employees, full and part-time, regardless of campus or location, all employees will have to use the online tool to register for your benefits for next year. This is critical for several reasons, not simply because it's a more convenient and more effective and efficient way of doing things, that's very true, but it also is important for us, we have to gather some additional information from you based on the ACA requirements. We have to do this to ensure that the college does not have several penalties that we would have to financially be responsible for if we don't do this, so it's critical. Even if you have previously enrolled, I'm going to go to one of the many open sessions that they have and I'm bringing my significant other to make sure that we are registered appropriately. So if you have not received this postcard at home, please make sure you contact HR because that means they may not have a correct address for you, you need to go and do that, but please be in mind that you will have to do this. It's also going to be ample assistance and sessions available to help you understand and navigate this new tool, so it's very critical for us to do that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael because I think you have a question for me.
I do, and we're going to start with an online question. This comes from John Arseneau, Tacoma Park Bookstore. It's a rather lengthy question, so apparently he didn't hear my admonition, but...
Disclosure, I think this question came in about 9 o'clock this morning, so I have seen it, just so you know. Go ahead.
Ferguson, Missouri brought the phrase "Black Lives Matter" to the forefront of the public's attention. The other expression that seemed to be a byproduct of the first was "All Lives Matter." Dr. Pollard often comments on how important student lives are and the need for their success. However, Dr. Pollard, president of this college, has been distinctly silent throughout the whole process of outsourcing the MC bookstores and art store. An expensive and objective outside study was done by bookstore professionals on the bookstore situation, but those results were set aside and outsourcing the bookstore was made a priority. Now, the current administration seems determined, if not already decided, to terminate the bookstore staff, yet keep the administrators that have made the poor decisions that lead to the bookstore's financial crisis. Additionally, high-paying appointed positions with the college and in administration seem to continue. So the question Dr. Pollard has raised, whether unintentional or not, is this: When do lives no longer matter? When students become employees? When an employee nears retirement? When it is financially convenient for the college? When it is strategic and convenient for the administration? I really don't want to hear anybody's response or words on this subject other than Dr. Pollard's. There have been too many contradictory comments and broken promises made by other lesser individuals in the college administration.
So thank you for excellent execution of reading that question. I want to thank John for the question. It's always interesting to me because lots of folks always say, "Well, have you heard from DeRion on this?" And I'm always struck with folks that they haven't heard it. And so, to be clear, I'm going to speak on this, I'm going to speak on it very directly. And if anybody has any questions about this, feel free to pose that to me at some point as well. What I thought, the interesting context, and because I saw his question this morning, I made a couple of notes because I wanted to make sure that I convey the message that I need to convey and probably the one that several people need to hear that they may not have thought they've heard thus far. Just as the "All Lives Matter" campaign and slogan is very complex and nuanced and oftentimes off-point, I'll also suggest that parts of that question have lots of things that are embedded in it that are complex, nuanced, and somewhat off-point as well. So I'm going to speak to a few of them because I think they're very important. I have spoken about this topic several times. In fact, if I'm correct, I've spoken on it here at an open forum, a Town Hall meeting before, and I spoke at a staff council meeting last year on this subject. In addition to that, probably just a month or so ago, I spoke at length, probably 45 minutes to an hour, at a governance training session about this issue and provided people with an opportunity to ask questions of me. And most of you who know me know that I have no problem responding to most things, even if I don't know the answer, I'm going to find out. So let me be very clear, I understand that this can feel very personal. I have worked at work where I had been laid off before. I have worked in work where the work is no longer deemed necessary for the institution and the position no longer existed. So I understand that this can be seen and viewed as something that is very personal and as something that people are struggling with. Our organization struggles with change as well, and I understand that. But I also want to say that to the extent that we haven't communicated as frequently as we should have or as directly as some people expected for that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that that has occurred. And to the question of holding people accountable, as Dr. Womack and many of her team members know, the one thing that I believe in living is a model of accountability. So I have talked to people, we have developed strategies, we have seen different outcomes as a result of some very intensive conversations and coaching about how we manifest this type of decision within the organization, and I will and have been holding people accountable for that. But let me be very clear, Montgomery College as an educational institution is a business. We are a business that has a budget of over a quarter of a billion dollars each year. Over a quarter of a billion dollars each year. We are a business and we are not immune to the economic forces that are happening in our country. We are not immune to the changing nature of work that's occurring across this country, even if we often believe that many of us are isolated from the idea of our work changing. Let me be clear, none of us, including me, are immune from the idea that at some point this organization will have to make decisions about your employment here. So let me be very clear about that. I know that's a hard message to hear, and those of you who teach in the business sector, those of you who watch trends and patterns across the country, know for a fact that we have been fairly isolated as a sector from these types of conversations. We no longer enjoy the privilege of not having these types of conversations. So again, if I have not been direct about this, let me be very direct about this right now. The current operations, structure, and function of our bookstore is no longer sustainable. It is not sustainable. It is not sustainable. Four and a half years ago, when I arrived at Montgomery College, after I'd been here for a little while, looking at the numbers, it became very interesting. Our revenue was certainly there, but it was not in keeping and sustainable with the expenses of a bookstore. Auxiliary services have a very distinctive purpose. They are there to be a self-sustaining entity of the institution and to give resources back to the college to help sustain other parts of the institution. And for many years, bookstores have done that. Our bookstores at Montgomery College have been very thoughtful about that and have people who care about the students and they care about the experiences of their employees. I have no doubt about that. So this is not a question about dedication to the organization, it's not a question about how much you care about the students and the work we do. There are decisions that will have to be made because this is a business. And I am deeply apologetic for the fact that at this point and at this time, this is where we find ourselves as a country, but I would tell you that we are not alone. Most community colleges across this country and certainly most four-year institutions have grappled with this issue of bookstores for a long time. So four and a half years ago, and I looked at this, and those of you know, I was an English major, I'm not a finance person, but there's certain things that are very obvious based on the fact that we have four bookstores, we have 28 employees in the bookstores, and we have an unsustainable financial model as there. We have to look at different options with that. And as a result of that, I charged Janet several months ago, several years, a year and a half ago, to look at this issue. Back four and a half years ago when I raised that, we brought folks together, we said, "Hey, let's spend time coming up with different models, let's try different approaches." Even in their best efforts, and they have made wonderful efforts, the reality we're in right now is not a sustainable one. I don't know how many more ways I can say it, and I'm sorry that we're in this position. I can also tell you that we're not alone. Other colleges across this country are grappling with this issue and it is the nature of work in this. So, as I said, no one, including me, has employment security. Does that make sense? And that's a hard message, I get it. I get it. But it's an important fact of life that higher education has been immune to. The other thing that's important about that, the nature of work is changing. We can look at every sector of work in this country and see that the nature of work is changing. How many of you actually book trips and use a travel agent anymore? Right? We can go across so many sectors, newspapers, so many different things have been affected by the changing technology, the changing economic landscape, the changing realities of what we do. So, here's the last thing I'll say on this. What I would do for every employee, because it's what I do for myself, all right? Because y'all, you hear me? I know this is a reality for me. It's one that as college presidents, we think about all the time, right? So here's what I do, I scan the environment, not just higher education. One of my favorite periodicals that I read is the Harvard Business Review. I read this because I want to know what the issues and trends are in the business world because inevitably they will affect us as a higher educational sector faster than we even thought possible. We need to be aware of the financial markets and understand the budget of the institution and understand the implications for decisions that we make. We have to, something I do, take advantage of my professional development opportunities. If you, and I heard this, actually I met with a young professional, they were at my house this weekend, last weekend, and one of the things we talked about was that if you go to the end of the year and you have not accessed your EAP dollars and you have done this for multiple years, shame on you. Okay? That is a commitment and obligation you have to have to yourself as an employee and to an organization of which you want to be a part of. The last thing that we have to do is to operate with urgency and awareness. These things are happening so fast around us that we don't even know how to respond and in a result of that, we can hunker down and think this is about me. And I know it affects you. And we are working tirelessly, I have a whole page on all the stuff that HR is trying to do to assist our employees who may be impacted by this. But I need you to know, this is the environment that we're in right now as a college and as a nation and dare I say, as a globe. So I want the employees to know, I want John to know, that indeed, while I have, we can have a whole different sociological conversation about the concept of "All Lives Matter," everybody within this organization matters, but we are a business and we have to make decisions sometimes that are very difficult. And I'll end by saying, we have not had a flurry of appointed, high-paid positions. I think that is a rumor that people like to persist in the absence of information. If you have a question about how many new employees we have within the organization who make high salaries, we have, the Maryland Association of Community Colleges puts together a profile every year that talks about what resources the organization has in terms of human resources. Take a look at it and then come to me and talk about a legitimate question about it. Okay? Anything else you need to say on that? Seriously? Yes, please.
(INAUDIBLE)
That's it, yeah, they can hear you, I can hear you too.
Gotcha. I'm Javier.
Hi Javier.
I'm a carpentry major right now and then I later plan on pursuing a finance major. One of my questions is, are you aware what the, if we outsource the bookstore, are you aware of how they're going to charge for the books, whether or not the rates will go up, whether or down, or how that's going to be managed?
Thank you Javier, that's the type of question I think is very critical about this. So one of the things that we're doing right now is designing the RFP, the Request for Proposals, that is going out to be designed in this. One of the things about becoming a part of probably a national, international market that's going to be responsible for our bookstores is that they have a greater buying capacity to get textbooks at lower cost. They will not have the same types of upcharges that we have to do as an organization. Now, one of the things that Dr. Womack has included and we've had very substantial conversations about this is what we would call the service area, what is it called? Service level agreements. The relationship that we expect the vendor to have with the college, with our students. Because one of the things I didn't say was in my notes, this issue of textbook affordability is a huge one. This is a national conversation and it is a Maryland conversation. The Maryland Legislature and the governor several years ago implemented strategies to ensure the textbook costs go down. I sat in a town meeting a couple of weeks, last year sometime, when I had a group of students talk to me about the inefficiencies in our system of having textbooks for same courses that are different at every campus and some that are $300 and some that are $100. Part of our academic restructuring was also to be able to look at these issues. So I don't have the direct answers to your question to say yes because we haven't issued the RFP, we haven't received the proposals, but that is the intent that we have going into this process. Thank you Javier.
All right, we're going to switch gears a little bit. We have a question, another question here from the audience.
All right, audience.
Hi, my name is Luis Bravo. I'm a student athlete in Montgomery College. And, dear president, Dr. Pollard, thank you. Let me be here. Players, coach, and all the MC men's soccer team are grateful for letting us be in here today at the Town Hall meeting. As a representative of the team, it is an honor for me to address you with all respect. Since 2012, when the college made the transition to Raptors, the soccer program has been growing as never before in the history of the college.
I agree.
We have achieved three times in a row the Maryland Juco Conference Championship, three times in a row the region championship, and which it has allowed us to be in three consecutive national championships. However, we have noticed that each year we receive less and less support from the college. The budget has dropped and the facilities are not the most appropriate for a team that has promoted the name of the college. During this session, 10 of our players have sprained their ankles due to the poor condition of the fields. For example, there are multiple holes as well as we found big nails through the field. Something needs to be changed. Either the maintenance of the field has to be improved or the field needs to be renovated into a turf field. We know that this is a large project, but we believe that it's necessity, I'm sorry, it is a necessity not only for the safety of our players and players that come from another college to play here, but also for the prestige of Montgomery College and its sport program. Thank you for your time and consideration and I hope we can help each other find a solution.
And the students shall lead us. That's all I have to say and you understand what I meant by that. Thank you so much for your question. I was unaware of this issue. I know we have reoccurring issues with the soccer field particularly after commencement because we have a huge tent that we put up for commencement and every year we have to go through a process of trying to repair the fields. That being said, I don't have an answer for you right now, but I'd like to go back. I was unaware of any budgetary challenges in terms of this, so I will ask Dr. Womack, Dr. Brown, and Dr. Solomon and our athletic director to give me a report in 10 days on this issue and I will make sure that I forward it to the soccer team for that. Okay? Thank you. And congratulations, if you have not seen our soccer team play, it is one of the highlights of my day when I have the opportunity to go over there and catch them. They are absolutely phenomenal. I'm expecting a championship. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Mike?
All right, we have a question, an online question. This is from Anthony Solano, who is a counselor professor here on the Germantown campus.
Sure.
With all the news reports of one in four college women reporting being sexually assaulted, what is it that a college as large as Montgomery, why is it that a college as large as Montgomery College has one staff member who is responsible for sexual assault issues and that is not their, and that's not their only responsibility with the college?
Thank you Anthony for the question. We actually don't, there is one person named as the college's Title IX coordinator as we're required to by the federal government. We have to identify a person who is the person who is responsible for ensuring the training, reporting, accountability measures within the institution. At this particular point, one of the things that probably is remiss in the conversations about these issues is that most of the issues around sexual assault on college campuses have been driven by the actions of things at four-year institutions. Two-year colleges have not seen thankfully the proliferation of assault that you see at four-year institutions. Now, what I will also say Anthony is that we have many people within the college who have responsibility to support healthy and clean campuses as it relates to these types of issues. So in addition to Christopher Moy, who is our coordinator on this issue, we have, I just tried to see if it's on my little list right here, no. We have Dr. Brenda Williams and who else has trained? Tammy Flowers, who had been certified and trained in Title IX issues as we're required to do. In addition to that, Christopher is designing a training program where many people within the college community will be responsible for that. In addition to that, we have our campus safety officers and many of our deans who serve as a part of our BIT process who've also had specialized training in this. So I think it's important, you are correct that we have identified a person who is the person who serves as the Title IX coordinator. If the case is made that we need to have additional support and responsibility, I just saw a title, a Dear Colleague Letter from the federal government on these issues, it's actually making some, to me, some directives about reporting structures in this, so I'm going to be spending some time looking at this as well. So thank you Anthony for the question.
I think this kind of segues into introducing a new person that has just joined the college.
Very good.
Kristen Rowe.
Yay Kristen.[1634.86][1634.86](APPLAUSE). I thank you for that because I wanted to make sure we introduce her because Kristen has a very important role here within the organization, many of you may not know. Kristen, you started July 1? When did you start?
February.
February, my bad. February, either I'm always condensing people or giving them longer amounts of time. February, and her job is a child protection coordinator. Her job is to help assist the organization in monitoring, assessing, and making sure that we have appropriate training programs around child safety issues. There have been a proliferation of issues particularly in the last several years as a direct result of Penn State and others about the health and safety of children on college campuses. Kristen has come to us and helped us particularly the whole background check scenario many of you are aware of. She's going to be implementing some training and doing some, lots of development for our employees around this, helping to coach people. I wanted to make sure I had her stand up here because a lot of people don't even know she's here, don't know her as a resource, so she's going to be calling on people to figure out how she can insert herself into your work to help you. She's a resource, a very important one. Her office, she reports within the office of the general counsel, but she will also tell you that she is all around. So thank you Kristen and welcome to Montgomery College. You're welcome.
All right, we have an online question from a student.
Okay.
From the Silver Spring, Tacoma Park Silver Spring Student Government. Shuttle buses start running at 9:00 AM, which is inconvenient for students with early classes such as 8:00 AM. Question, has the college thought about adding more shuttles that can accommodate early classes by starting the bus runs at 6:00 AM? And, a follow-up to that, what about having a shuttle bus run from Tacoma Park to Germantown? Currently, the bus stops in Rockville and students must board the Germantown bus.
Can I have your mic?
Sure.
We're doing a change-up?
No, no, we can hear, we can hear you fine, it's the room.
Oh.
Yeah. They're having a little problem.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I never have a problem projecting my voice, so I apologize if I wasn't doing that well. So the question was about the shuttle bus. One of the things that's interesting is that the college implemented the shuttle service last year and we spent some time studying how to deliver it. We piloted it first and then we moved to different campuses and now we're at all of the campuses. The fine art of this right now is making sure that we look at alignment with the schedule. So I do know that this semester, if I'm correct, there was... So I do know that this semester, if I'm correct, there were some adjustments made to the schedule to ensure that we were able to do some of that. Is there an opportunity for improvement? What was the student's name?
Did not leave a name, just student government.
Student government of Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. We are in the process of looking and trying to match that up. We are, just went out for the bid, I think, on the new vendor who's gonna be, the vendor who'll be working with us on the shuttle services. So I'm hopeful that you'll see continued improvements. I have no doubt that this has been a wonderful resource for students. I have no doubt that we need to continue to improve upon what we're doing. I do know that the team has been doing that, and once the new contract starts, we'll have a great opportunity to do a lot more work with that. But how many of you have run, read the shuttle, have written the shuttle bus? Yeah. I hear a lot how efficient and effective it is, and we want to continue to make sure that we do a better job of that. So, thank you student government.
All right, we have a question right here in the front row.
Hello.
Could you stand up please?
Hi, my name is Miriam Yaldrum. I am the Vice President of the Student Senate. We have, I just wanted to say thank you for coming here and discussing all these issues, and I would like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask questions.
Totally.
Also, I would like to thank Montgomery College for the opportunity in building the BE Building for more space. I just had one question. The students here at Germantown Campus have concerns about more space for clubs. I was wondering if Germantown Campus or Montgomery College is willing to accommodate for that.
So, willing is certainly the desire, able is always the challenge. All of our campuses are, so let me start off by saying this, Montgomery College has the largest space deficit of any community college in the state of Maryland. We have a significant challenge in terms of providing adequate space for our students, and what has been the priority typically has been instructional space. So we have, as you just described, a phenomenal new BE Building, which by the way, if I'd had that building when I was in school, I would probably be a science major, because it is an absolute glorious space to learn. I can't even imagine what it'd be like to teach in that building and learn in that building. So, it's important to have those types of spaces, Miriam. But the other thing is that we have always suffered, and the challenge as organization is to have adequate space for student gathering. So I do know for a fact, one of the beautiful things we're doing right now, as we are mandated by the state of Maryland each year, excuse me, every 10 years, every decade, to do a facilities master plan. And one of the things in the facilities master plan that will be taken to the Board later this academic year for their review and submittal to the state of Maryland, is that we've identified several issues that we need to respond to, and one of the ones we've talked about is to create more meeting spaces and more opportunity for students to have gathering spots on each of our campuses. Just so the students of Germantown will know, this is not a problem, this endemic to Germantown. When I go to Rockville, the students will tell me the same exact thing, and if I go to Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, they will tell me the same exact thing. One of the challenges is that we are typically seen as a commuter institution, so we have not in the past, I think, spent a lot of time thinking about how to create these spaces, or have the opportunity to create these spaces. But I will ask each of the provosts to work with Dr. Brown and others to see if there are ways in which we can identify some additional space. We don't have new buildings just yet that we can be able to identify that space, but if we can find spaces within existing buildings, I think we can try and do that. If we can add furniture, I was so happy to finally see furniture that got in the lobby of the new Rockville sign, good God, because I would walk in there and say, here's a wasted space for students, they could be sitting here gathering. So we need to be finding more opportunities. I know that Provost Latimer is adamant about the furniture needs in the new BE Building to create additional space, so we're trying to do that. We're always challenged by space, and we're challenged by resources, but we're working on that. Thank you, Miriam, for the question.
Okay, we have another question from the audience.
Hi, I'm Javier again.
Actually, let me interrupt for one second. I've been asked by the folks in the back to kind of repeat the question.
Sure.
So I'm, I'll give a quick paraphrase of the question.
Your voice carries better than mine.
It's not a question, it's actually a comment referring to Miriam's question. As I mentioned earlier, I'm part of the carpentry program, and one of the, my ideas for accommodating spaces, I know the school has a lack of resources financially, so why not have some of the students who are, like the architecture program, help design a space for us? And as carpenters, as we build things every semester, at the end we end up tearing it down, but why not build something according to one of our other students' design? That's something that's meant to stand and last for us to use.
So, thank you for that question Javier. What I think is very interesting about what you said is that I wish it were that easy to do. One of the challenges is that when we construct facilities, there are things, as you probably know in your profession, permitting or regulations, that have certain things that limit us, there are certain approval processes we'd have to go through from the county and the state in order to erect those types of facilities that we then could leave. But I'm happy to see if there's a way in which we can be experimental on this. So Dr. Wormack, Dr. Yates, I'd like for you all to kind of look at Comar and see if there's an opportunity for us to explore something like this. I know we were trying to do something at the Godelski Institute with something, with some additional space, so I think it's a worthwhile process to explore. I don't know, I can't guarantee you that I can have a yes on that, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation. Thank you.
We have a question from back here.
Yes, sir.
Hi everybody, my name is Fermi. So, my question is, I'm a computer science major, and then the issue, the issues, or the issues some of the computer science majors has is that most of the classes are not offered here in Germantown Campus. And I believe I've raised an issue like this before, but I didn't get like a reply, or like a response to it, so the question is, is there anything that has been done, or is there like a process that has been going on to create more science, more computer science classes to be happening here, or do we still have to go all the way to Rockville to take the classes?
Thank you for that question. So I apologize if you haven't received a response from somebody about that. Who's the dean responsible for computer sciences?
Dean Kimui.
Dean Kimui, Mohammed Kimui. So one of the things that's really interesting about this, is probably why you may not have had the most direct response to that, is that the college went through a significant academic restructuring. And in that academic restructuring, one of the things we did that had been different from the history of the college, is to have deans who had not only college-wide responsibility for coordination and delivery of courses in the set of disciplines, but they also are held accountable for that now. So I do know that this year, the deans have spent a lot of time looking at how to coordinate schedules, how to be able to look at enrollment. One of the challenges with us as well is that we have to have, there's certain, we're creating a new program, new courses, we may look at letting lower enrollment courses go. So some of our challenges is to make sure that we build enrollment, but I do know that our deans are working with that, and department chairs are looking at workshops and seminars and orientation programs to help people understand, to build enrollment, while at the same time looking at the course delivery and trying to put, have equitable dispersment of classes between campuses. One of the things that I can say, having been a dean and a department chair at some point in my career, and a chief academic officer, it is more of an art than a science. And it's very hard to get the appropriate balance, but I can tell you, I know that they're committed to doing that. Dean Mo, is there anything else I should say to that?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have another question from back here, student.
Hello everyone, my name is Kofi, and I'm a member of the Student Senate here on the Germantown Campus. First of all, I would like to thank you for the shuttle, it's a great initiative. I just learned today that it has a Wi-Fi in it, so.
Ah.
Yeah. My, my concern is, is about the counseling department here, specifically the engineering department. There, we have three counselors here, four engineering students, and just one of them is for general engineering issues. So two of them are specific, like the statics and physics. So I'd like to know if there's any way we can get more counselors for engineering students here, because there's about 20 of them in Rockville, so.
Thank you, it's a great question. Interestingly enough, I would just, as I walked out of my office today, I had on my desk the agenda for my monthly meeting with Dr. Brown, and in that, she has some, on the topic is this issue of student services, looking at delivery and function, and looking at how we align our counseling faculty and staff to respond to the needs of students. I do know that this is an issue, we continue to find and think about ways in which we can have dispersed employees in a way to help support students. Again, changing nature of work employees, right? So how do we think about how we also can use online resources, whether it be using the internet, where we're able to do e-advising, thinking about ways in which we can have faculty and staff come to a campus and maybe have specialized sessions here. I've heard your concern, and I will make sure that Dr. Brown and I talk about this at our meeting tomorrow. Thank you. It's tomorrow, we meet, right? Thank you.
All right, we have a question right here. If you could stand please.
Hi, Dr. Pollard.
Hello.
So, MC has many great resources and opportunities for students, like tutoring, the online tutoring, learning centers, programs, honor programs, activities, but many students find themselves too busy to participate in school activities because of work or other outside responsibilities. So, what could be done, or how can school activities fit their schedule?
I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'm gonna repeat that from the back. She, her question essentially is, there's a lot of activities for students, but a lot of students' schedules do not match up with, when those activities are held. Is there any way that this can be improved?
So I, I think, first of all, let me just say, Carla is one of my, I know I'm not supposed to have favorite students, but she's one of my favorite students, because she's a mentee of mine in a program called Generation Hope, and she's just this outstanding young woman who is speaking the truth of so many students who attend Montgomery College. Our students have very complex lives. They are oftentimes working full or part-time, they're parenting, they're caring for other people, they are living in very difficult circumstances. I just heard a statistic the other day that the family of four, to have a sustainable wage in this county is $110,000 a year. Family of four, a sustainable living wage. So, so many of our students are struggling in so many ways, so their lives are very complex. What I also heard from Carla's question though, is how are we as an organization to be more responsive to the needs of students, and how do we learn to schedule our time and resources in ways that can help meet students where they are, instead of what's necessarily the most comfortable for us as employees of the organization? So what I think is important, one is I would love for you to capture some ideas that you have about that, and I'm very happy to share that, most directly with our student services area, but also with our academic areas as well. I had a student catch me the other day who lamented, I think she's an education major, and she said, I'm waiting for this one class to get delivered, but it's only offered every other semester or something like that, and it's really holding me back from graduating. And I said, send me an email about that. I said, because this is an opportunity as an organization, if we're gonna make sure that we're focused on the 59, as well as the 41, we're gonna have to think differently about the work we do and how we structure that. So I appreciate your question Carla, I'll be happy to take that back and have people start getting some answers to figure out how we can do it. The other thing, to be quite frank, is we can't do everything we probably want to do, so we have to think about how we use our resources in a way that can meet students where they are. The last thing I'll say to that, because I know Sally asked a question, I saw that, those of you know, you send questions in, usually when I walk in, they let me look at them ahead of time. So I saw Sally's question, and she talked about this idea of how do we craft community for our students? That was really, I think, the essence of that. Bless you, bless you. So many of our students are hungry for that, whether they know it or not. The idea of being around, I remember Carla and I were talking, she said, I think I want to start a club for students who knit. I remember that, did you ever go do that?
Yeah.
Ah, see? So, that idea of trying to figure out strategies around that, and also particularly for students who oftentimes are at promise but are also at risk. So we do know that our Achieving the Promise Group has been spending a lot of time trying to identify a series of associates, whose job is to work with students directly in these small cohorts, to form community and to talk about the ways in which they can help them navigate the organization. We have a lot of small groups that do that work, even the work we're doing in our part-time faculty institute, where we're having folks who are gonna be working with groups of part-time faculty to help them navigate the organization and be of resource to students. All of that is important. I am convinced that the problems that we have right now in our nation are because we have lost our sense of community. I can remember growing up in a community where if someone was hurt and someone was hurting, we came together to figure out how we could be of resource to that. We knew our neighbors, we grew up together. One of the reasons why we have red and blue states is because of our mobility patterns. So now people tend to live with the people that think like them, or look like them, whatever the case may be. One of the challenges we have right now is to figure out how we bring community back to the work that we do, and I think it's so important, because that's gonna be the defining issue for the 59%. Thank you Sally.
All right, we have a question here from the front row.
Hello.
If you could stand please.
Hello, Dr. Pollard.
Hello, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I'm Amanda, and I'm from the library at Germantown. And this piggybacks on the bookstore. So the bookstore issue is resolved. There have been rumors going around, I would say for the past couple of years now, that the early learning centers, which I always refer to as childcare centers, are either gonna be shut down, or they're going to be outsourced. Can you speak to the rumors that are floating around?
Thank you Amanda, I certainly can speak to that. So again, looking at the nature of work and sustainable revenue, we have yet another challenge within the institution, and a point of change that we have to look at are our bookstores and as well as our childcare early learning centers. Again, a model where we have to have sustainable revenue to support the service, that's gonna be really critical. So Dr. Wormack, working with, who are the people working with you on this? Dr. Brown and a few other folks are actually sitting down right now and having these conversations. What is the remedy that we can look at? They've engaged, I believe, the managers in some of those conversations, excuse me?
The provosts.
The provosts as well. So it's very important for us to be very thoughtful about this. The difference is that a decision has not been made about how to do that, and I appreciate the point you've had. We have reached a decision about the bookstores, we're moving in a direction, we have not reached that with the early learning centers. Part of that is looking at best practices, looking at what other opportunities are out there for books, for early learning centers, thinking about the services to students and how we might be able to respond to that, and probably most of all, what is a sustainable revenue model? Does it exist? And if it does not exist, then what do we do as a result of that? Great question, thank you Amanda.
All right, we have another question from the audience. If you could stand please.
Good afternoon all, good afternoon Dr. Pollard.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carolyn Harris, and I am a second-year student. I started a leadership program this semester to get an idea of leadership and what it has to offer. And while I was in one of the meetings, we were signing up for various events that we could serve for the community. What I came across was they have a men's program, or a college student to a middle school student for mentoring. But as I asked my advisor that day, Ms. Debbie, she said there was no program for women to mentor, or, you know, college women, or college students to mentor young females. So that was my issue of what kind of program do you have, or can project, or start for females or women students to mentor other women students?
So first of all, thank you for that Carolyn. I don't know about the program that you're mentioning, for men, but it certainly seems to me if it's a student organization, it probably requires a student to step up and say they'd like to craft this organization. If it is a program out of student life, I think the other thing, we can have our student life directors talk to each other. So, who did you, what program, do you know the name of the program you're talking about?
She did not, it's, it's a, it's a college student mentoring program for middle school students. That's all that I was aware of.
So if you can do me a favor, if you could, if you can go back to where you found that information, you can send me an email, president@montgomerycollege.edu, very easily. I'm very happy to figure out, because once I know the nature of the program, I'm able to figure out how we can align it for girls similarly to how we do it for boys, and that way it makes it easier. If it's a student, a club, that requires somebody to create the club and to take responsibility for that, if it's a program as a result of a discipline or something like that, I bet I just need a little bit more information. Thank you Carolyn.
I will do that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we have, is there one back here?
Way in the back, yep.
Oh, be right there.
Hi, Dr. Pollard, my name's Dr. Anne Puyou, I'm an English professor here at Germantown. And I just wanted to piggyback quickly on the issue of the early learning centers, because I was thinking about them specifically when you were addressing the earlier question about student engagement and student success. As a parent of three young children who has had perhaps experience with 12 different institutions for young children, I would say that Montgomery College is the very finest with which I've had experience, that is a real testament to the directors of the centers here, the quality of the education they provide. As an instructor, I know that access to reliable, affordable childcare is a significant factor in success for many of our students. in success for many of our students, and I would say, from my perspective, it's a crying shame that many more of our students do not have access, affordable access, to the services that we provide here, and that I would, my, I think these services should be expanded rather than, you know, being cut or restructured in any way, both for the benefit of our students here and for the benefit of the students we will have in 15 years. Because this is about, that's something that's more about education and about success than about revenue, I hope.
Thank you for that.
And I would also ask if there's a place to which I could direct my comments or to which other people could direct their comments as these decisions are being considered.
Certainly, you can certainly direct those comments to me. You can also send them to Dr. Warmack and Dr. Brown, Senior Vice President for Administrative Fiscal Services, Senior Vice President for Student Services. So, here's a very interesting point, and I love the way in which you phrase the question. There is no doubt in my mind that many, all of our services that we offer here at the College and Auxiliary, that they're there to be self-sustaining and provide support services, care deeply about the students, and deliver excellent service. That has never been the question. The question has to be, how do we develop a sustainable business model that allows us to be able to deliver that service to students? And if we can't craft it as a service to students, how do we then absorb it into the budget? And here's the important question, what do we not do? Right? Because I did not hear anybody volunteering not to get a pay raise this year. Right? 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 Okay? I did not hear that. I have not heard a lot of people volunteering for certain types of programs that we need to discontinue within the organization. Unfortunately, a part of the work that we have to do is managing our priorities and figuring out what's going to be a priority. So, if as an organization, after we look at the various models and we say that it is indeed the case that this is such an essential service to students, that we're going to deliver on this, and we're going to take it as a loss if we need to do it, or we're going to augment it with other resources from something else, we have to be prepared for the equal conversation of what we're not going to do as an organization to do that. And that's where I've challenged us to be able to think about these things. This is not easy. And I would tell you all, it was nothing that when I signed up to be a college English faculty member that I ever thought in 15 or 20 years I'd be a president trying to figure out how to navigate this. But the reality is that the times are there, and I will tell you that our county and our state are demanding that we do that. Hard questions, but I really appreciate the question. Mike?
All right, we have time for just a couple more quickies, so we're going to go to two online questions.
Okay.
First is regarding a serenity space at Tacoma Park Silver Spring. I'm going to paraphrase. It's a small area, doesn't hold very many people. It's in the middle of the hallway, and there is no way to guide students to where it is located, and it's also on the west side of campus, which is inconvenient for the majority of students.
So, here's the thing I'm going to say, I said it earlier, we have the largest space deficit of any community college in the state of Maryland. Every time you do a survey, and they have very complicated formulas, every one of our campuses has a problem. If you were to go, and I just noticed because I was speaking with Senator Madalino this morning, talking to him, if you were to go to the Rockville Campus, the Rockville Campus was designed for 8,000 students. We currently serve over 16,000 students on that space. So, the fact that we have a serenity garden or serenity space, I'm elated for, because we probably had to carve a closet out of someplace to make that happen. Should it be larger? Yes. Should we have more? Can we have one on the east and the west side of the campus? I'm not even going to go there, because my first response is part of what we got to do is walk, and it's okay to do that. The last thing I'll say, which is important, if there's an issue of wayfinding, I'll talk to Dr. Stewart. He can work with Dr. Yates to make sure that we do something about advertising that space more.
All right, this last question, it's maybe the toughest one of the day.
Oh, boy.
It's from a Robin and Miles. And they want to know, since we have not seen you all week, will you be home for dinner tonight?
No, you will not see me for dinner tonight. I will be in a meeting at Tacoma Park Campus until probably 9:00 tonight, so I will not be home for dinner, but I will be at your soccer game and baseball game this weekend. Thank you.
We have time for one more question in the room, or we have, oh, okay. Have to make it quick.
All right, so I'm Jacia Smith, and Dr. Pollard, you've been talking a lot about us adapting the way that we do work. So, for a number of years, we've been talking about the need for succession planning at the college.